Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the July 13th meeting of the Town of Pompey zoning board of appeals. I'm David Tessier, chairman, and we have most of our members here tonight. We've got Patrick Z, David Hale, Don Nuga Bower, Kevin Sharp is trying to get on. He's hopefully on by telephone. Our secretary, Donna Alnot, our attorney, Tim Friteski, and our code enforcement officer, Bob Regress. And we have also our applicant has joined us, David Bravo Collin, representing the applicant for Canary Housing. We just have one meeting, one item on the agenda tonight, and that's the application from Canary Housing for two area variances, one regarding the frontage of their property and the other regarding the square footage of the property at 7387 Academy Street in the hamlet of Pompey. And in a moment, I'll read that application, but I want to check first to make sure the appropriate fees have been paid for this application. And our secretary, the fees have been paid. Has this application been properly advertised with a neighbor notice? Yes, it has been. And have neighbor notices been sent out?
Yeah.
Okay. And we also have a response back from the county planning agency. And I have a copy of that. I don't know if, Don, if you've got one yet or not, but.
I do not.
Okay. So I will read part of this into the record, and you can have this one for the file.
Okay.
So at this point, I will read the application into the record. And I assume that, oh, the board members should all have copies of the application, and there are two drawings to go with it. And there are some other submittals we've received, but I think the board members all have that, should have those two documents. So this is an application submitted by David Bravo Collin. The owner of the property is Karen Kinnick. And the property is at 7387 Academy Street, Hamlet of Pompey. The zoning class is Hamlet Residential. The tax map number is 0200202. It is not in a flood zone or 100 feet of a wetland. The description of the appeal or variance requested, it's an area variance to allow a four-unit resident use which requires variance for density, requiring 15,000 square feet of land per unit. So variance is needed where there's only approximately 11,000 square feet per unit available. It's also requested a road frontage of 150 feet is required, and there's only 144 feet present. Describe how strict application of the law would produce undue hardship. This small housing project for chemically sensitive people requires costlier materials and procedures to be environmentally safe. The hardship is less income for their expenses. Describe how the hardship created is unique, not shared by all properties in the immediate vicinity, smaller lot sizes than other properties. Describe how a variance would observe the spirit of the zoning law and would not change the character of the district. The adjacent properties to the northeast are north and east are public park areas. The additional unit requested fits into the existing character of the hamlet. So that's the application. And I mentioned two drawings that we have received. One is a survey by Christopherson. And the other one is a proposed site plan done by David Bravo Collin. I have received a response from Anandar County Planning Board dated from their meeting dated June 10th. And they described the project as we have described it. And their conclusions to skip to the end are that the Anandar County Planning Board has determined that said referral will have no significant adverse intercommunity or community-wide implications. So they have taken no position on the application. However, they have four comments. And comments are, they're not binding, but there are things that we might, this board might pay attention to. Comment one, the applicant is required to coordinate Academy Street access plans with the Anandar County Department of Transportation. So that's a part of the permit process. Hi, Kevin.
Hi, sorry.
Thank you. We started without you, but just going over the application.
Okay.
The second comment, the health department, Anandar County Health Department must formally accept or approve any proposed septic system. Number three, the town is advised to ensure the proposed parking and turnaround can accommodate the increase in dwelling units. And the last comment is that the Syracuse, Anandar County Planning Agency is working with other communities to develop effective hamlet and town center planning and encourages the Town of Pompey to reach out to the department for assistance. So those are comments and things that we have to pay atten, should pay attention to. All right. What's next? Any additional information? I do have an email from the neighbor next door, Pat Albin. Do have a an email today from the applicant with an amended proposed site plan. And a letter from the applicant stating the need for the project and a letter of support from Arise. I've also received a letter, email from the yeah, the Immaculate Conception Church across the street from Jim Green. If those, when we get to the the hearing portion, I think it's appropriate then to have these people read those into the record. If they're not available, then I will read them in. Do any of you have anything else that has come in in the last few days? Anything to add? Okay. Tim, should I talk about the environmental requirement right now? Is that appropriate?
Yep.
Okay. As you all know, the state requires us to review environmental issues for every project requiring a decision by us. This is a area variance for a residential project, and as such, it's classified as type two by the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And therefore, it requires no further environmental review by this board. At this point, to take care of that issue, I need a motion from somebody that says that this board is the lead agency for seeker purposes, seeker being state environmental quality review. And that it is a type-two action and a residential property, therefore requiring no further environmental review. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, Dave.
That was Dave Hale?
Yes.
Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll give you a second.
Don Nuga Bower, second. And I'd like our secretary to call the roll so we can have a roll call vote.
Okay. Chairman David Tessier?
Hi.
Patrick Frazee? I can't hear Pat. Pat, your microphone's off.
On mute.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
David Hale?
Hi.
Donald Nuga Bower?
Yes.
And Kevin Sharp?
Hi.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's nothing else to I guess we're, it's time to open the public hearing. I can't think of anything else organizationally that we need to do. So, Tim, have I missed anything at this point?
No, we haven't missed anything. We can open the public hearing. We're going to keep in mind while we listen to the public what our, what our standard is, which is the benefit to the, does the benefit to the applicant outweigh the detriment to the community? And that's the ultimate question that has to be answered.
Okay. So is anyone in favor of? I guess we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Well, Dave, I've got a question first, and maybe you guys covered it last night. Regarding the number of units that are okay in the Town of Pompey and a single dwelling. Is that strictly guided by the square footage of the property? Or do we, I thought?
And in a, and maybe Bob can answer this too, but I've got the code here, and this is a hamlet residential zone. And two or three family unit is allowed using the same square footages for a single family. And it says that the area for that two or three family unit is minimum of 20,000 square feet of land with 100 feet of frontage. So that, that is allowed today. I mean, without, with just a building permit, they can continue with their three-unit house, three-family house with that 20,000 square feet of land, and they've, they've got over an acre right now. And it only needs 100 feet of frontage. Does that answer your question?
So why, why are we looking for 100 on the applicant for the 150?
Okay. They are requesting a four-unit four-unit house.
And that is that's my question. What is, what is the requirement for that? That doesn't, that is not covered under the two and three family homes?
That's right. It's under multifamily in the, in the Hamlet Residential. And a multifamily requires 15,000 square feet of land per unit. So with four units, it requires 60,000 square feet of land. And they have somewhere around 46,000 square feet.
Okay.
So then the same with the frontage that requires 150 feet of frontage, and they own 144 feet. So we're looking at those two variances for tonight.
Yep.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So given that, would someone like to make a motion to open the hearing?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'll move.
Okay. Pat, Pat made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dave seconded?
Dave Hale, yep.
Again, a roll call vote.
Okay. Dave Tessier?
Yes.
Patrick Frazee?
Yes.
David Hale?
Yes.
Donald Nuga Bower?
Yes.
Kevin Sharp?
Yes.
Okay. The hearing is open. Now, this is where it's going to get interesting on how do we handle this? And the only rule is that this is a hearing. We want to hear from everybody. It's, it's not a debate, a discussion back and forth. If someone's got questions, let them ask the question to us, and we'll decide if we need to answer the question and try and get an answer if we can. So do we have somebody on that wants to speak at our public hearing?
There is one question that has come in by Zoom
Okay.
an anonymous attendee. The question reads, how many individuals are considered one family? Or how many people will be allowed in one unit?
And that's the question.
That is the question.
Well, I'm going to start with the code officer on that and see if our town ordinance says how many people constitutes a family or a unit. I really don't think it's there anywhere. And that's, there's nothing in the ordinance that talks about, that I know of, size of family, their apartment units. Tim, do you have anything?
I think you're right, David. It would be, it would be the people who are acting as a family as a, as a single unit. There's no, there's no number. It's obviously going to be restricted based on the size of the apartment itself, how many rooms, how many bathrooms, those types of things. But the code doesn't speak to that issue.
Okay. I didn't think so. So I think that's the best we can do for an answer unless somebody's got anything else. All right. Do we have any other public comments? Anybody else out there? I mentioned some that we've gotten in. Should I read them in? I'm going to start with the one from the neighbor next door. I thought they were going to try and call in. That's, and they might be listening. Pat Albin sent in an email on July 3rd. Says Mr. Rodriguez, I received a letter concerning the Canary Housing. I live at 7381 Academy Street, which is next door to the property in question, and this is very concerning to me. As you know, our home operates on a well, and our well has gone dry twice in the last few years, to the point we had to have a new well dug, which ended up being sulfur water. So we only use that water if our dug well runs dry. I am also concerned about the leach field for four families and the proximity to our wells. I am not in favor of this property being zoned for four families. So that's one comment we've got. Everybody hear that all right?
Yes.
Okay. I've got another letter from the Immaculate Conception Church from Jim Green. And I understand he's listening tonight, too. This is a little longer than the other one. Town of Pompey zoning board members, as one of the two trustees of Immaculate Conception Church, I would like to raise a couple of concerns about the proposal on the agenda for this evening's public zoning board meeting regarding the Canary Housing request for 7387 Academy Street in the village of Pompey. Our number one concern is the water requirements for a three-unit home versus a four-unit home. Watering wells is always an issue in Pompey, as we are all aware of. I wouldn't have to object to the four-unit variance on that issue alone. The Immaculate Conception Church well runs out of water during periods of high use, even though they are far and few. This indicates to me that the supply is already marginal. The submitted map has a couple of errors in it that should be clarified. The area marked parking area for fire department is really owned by Immaculate Conception Church. It is used on Sundays for parking during services. The area marked town park to the north is owned by the fire department and should be marked as such. Both of these areas are referenced as public park areas in the requests for variance documents. The map shows four parking spaces allocated for the home. For a three-unit home, this is marginal at best. For a four-unit home, this would surely not be adequate. Overflow parking would likely be either on the street or in the Immaculate Conceptions parking lot. Also, snow removal for the four parking spaces would likely be into our parking lot. The only serious objection to this project as it stands now is the water source for the four-unit variance. We, the trustees of Immaculate Conception, would like to go on record as opposing the four-unit variance requested by the developer-owner. Please take these concerns into consideration when deciding on whether or not to allow the variances. That, for, that for me brings up a subject. This project has also been presented to our planning board, and looks like either of these projects, whether it's three-family or multifamily, requires a site plan approval by the planning board. So such things as parking lot numbers and sizes and driveways should all be on the planning board's agenda as a part of the proposed site plan. Now, the other two submittals I have, one is from Canary Housing directly, the other is from Arise. We haven't heard from David Bravo Collin yet, the applicant, so.
I was waiting.
Two more questions. Do you want to hear those first?
Do we have some more questions?
Yep.
Yes, let's, let's do that.
Okay. Again, from anonymous, was this build previously reviewed by the board, and what was the decision and why?
This build?
Yes.
No, it was not previously reviewed by this board.
Okay. Another anonymous, it's been stated that the road frontage and acreage are not large enough. This project should be denied on that alone. We, as residents, live here for peace, quiet, and no traffic. This goes against our small community lifestyle. I guess it's not a question, it's a comment.
Okay. And I'm not sure how to respond to or consider people who are anonymous. Obviously, at a public meeting, they're there in front of us, and here they, I guess they have a right to be anonymous, but we just consider them accordingly. Any others?
I don't see any at this moment.
Okay. So I think we need to let our applicant speak and present.
Okay, I have a few comments. The, the site plan that I emailed today was revised. Most of the revisions were done earlier on response to the planning board comments, and that includes the driveway and parking areas. There are now six parking spaces proposed. The snow plowing is very simple. You plow in from the street and right through the turnaround, and the snow drops down the hill. The other thing that addresses was something I found out on Saturday, and that, that's the neighbor's comment about the well that they use. It was closer than 100, the minimum distance that a septic system is allowed to be from an active well is 100 feet. And I was not aware that they were using a well in that location right behind their house. I was only aware of the one that's farther back in the property. So I revised the site plan in order to have the septic system 100 feet from their second well or their first well. So the septic system is located 100 feet from each of the neighbor's two wells plus 100 feet from our well. I don't think there's another issue that, oh.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
Do we have, do we have a copy of that new revised site plan?
I emailed it to five or six people today.
Yes, and I, I do have a copy, but I wonder if we have one that we can put on the screen.
Yep, I have it. I can pull it up.
Okay. Would that help you, David, at this point? It would, it would help the board to look at that revision.
It may help you, but I
We'd like to see it, and we have your explanation.
I have, I have a plan in front of me.
Well, she's going to be able to put it on our screen, I hope.
Yeah, hang on a second.
Because we did get it in today.
Does that do anything for you?
Not yet. Let's see what she can come up with. If you want to continue until that comes up, go ahead.
The other point was that the number of people is restricted by the number and size of bedrooms. And most of, we have some of them, some of them allowed, some of the bedrooms we have in here allow two people in each bedroom, some allow only one. But the fact is that this project is designed for chemically sensitive people, and typically there will be one most likely in each unit, and it's possible that there could be a married couple. But the likelihood is that it's going to be single people. And typically, they would use one bedroom for sleeping only and the other bedroom as a study or work area. Because it's important to keep, not only is it important to build a building with safe materials, but it's also important to have a sleeping area that has almost nothing in it other than sleeping bed and sheets and stuff like that. My wife is chemically sensitive, and she has her own bedroom that's set up like that, and she has her own, another bedroom is used for her office. She's pretty much housebound, so she's inside all the time. I don't know if that helps anybody, but.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, we have a, figured, oh, your revised site plan on our screen. Okay, we have a revised site plan on our screen.
Yeah, you should be able to see the 100-foot raises from the different wells.
Yes. Yeah, and that is quite a change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I only learned about that well on Saturday.
Okay.
And I immediately adjusted for that because I don't want to put a septic system next to somebody's well.
And you're showing six parking spaces now?
Yes, that's correct.
And the snow removal would be in the driveway and then down over the hill toward the...
So we have the turnaround there, and so that's clear. And then you can come in and just plow it down the...
Okay. And I... This will be presented to the planning board, of course.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions aboard on the new plan?
Has that septic system been approved by the county?
They approved the concept. We have to confirm the the percolation and the exact size, but they've approved the concept.
The test pit has not been done yet, correct?
We did a perk test in a test pit. We perked where the old septic system is, which is within the 100 feet of well number two. And that was 11 to 15, so it perked pretty well. And we have not perked where this system is going yet.
So we don't know if this area is going to be acceptable for the leach field yet?
Not yet. I expect it will be, but we haven't proved it.
With the snow removal, will the snow be pushed over onto that leach field?
No, it'll just go down the hill before the leach field.
Ultimately, it's going to flow that way. When it melts, it's going to flow down. It's going to flow that way. Low point.
Yes. Any other questions on the site plan? Okay. Thank you. David, you got more, I assume?
We had the... You got the one-page letter. Maybe I'll read it. Canary Housing has asked for a variance for the property at 7387 Academy Street. We would like to take the footprint that was originally planned for three apartments and make better use of the interior space to create four apartments. The fourth apartment is important to our group for two reasons. The primary reason we committed to this project for people disabled with environmental sensitivities is that the standard funding pathways for disability housing have not produced any accessible and affordable housing for chemically and electrically sensitive people anywhere on the East Coast. This disability is degenerative if a person does not have safe housing. We are creating a kind of housing that does not otherwise exist in this county or state. Three apartments are good, but four apartments in the same space are better. Generally, four apartments would house four hypersensitive people. The second reason we need the fourth apartment is that because HUD regulations do not result in housing that is safe for environmentally sensitive people, we have had to find a funding source in the retail loan market. Retail market loans have a higher interest rate than funding opportunities that are specifically designed for disabled people. The fourth apartment makes the numbers work with fair market rents. With the fourth apartment, the income covers the expenses. We are trying very hard to keep the rents at a level that makes them affordable for disabled people with Section 8, since there is no other accessible housing available. One woman in our group has been searching for safe housing for 16 years and slowly deteriorating over that time. This project creates a path out of that critical housing dilemma for environmentally sensitive people. And we would like to keep it affordable so that it is as useful as possible. We need the fourth apartment to keep the rents affordable. And then the second item I emailed was a a letter of support from Arise, which is the Independent Living Center for Anandaga County. Dear Mr. Tesler, we accept this letter and support. Please accept this letter in the application of Canary Housing for necessary approvals to renovate and otherwise adapt the structure located at 7387 Academy Street in Pompey. I currently serve as the Chief Executive Officer of Arise, which is the independent living center for Anandaga County. Arise is organized and directed by people with disabilities. We provide services to people of any age with any kind of disability. All of Arise's services are community-based, meaning that we operate no institutions or facilities. A major focus of Arise is to ensure that affordable, accessible housing is available for people with disabilities. The Canary Housing Incorporated proposal will create much-needed housing for people with multiple chemical sensitivities who have a very difficult time locating any suitable housing. Arise applauds the efforts of Canary Housing to tackle this problem. Please contact me if I can be of any further assistance. Tony Anderson, Chief Executive Officer.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, anything else?
Not directly if I can answer any questions, but I don't have any other comments.
Okay, I guess it's time for questions from the board.
Yeah, Dave, I've got a question. Let's fast forward here and say that we are willing to approve this. Would the applicant be willing to accept a restriction of, say, four to six persons residing in the entire property?
Yes, we would.
Which, four, five, or six?
Well, what if someone was married or, you know, a single mom with a child or even two children?
Yeah, I would try to go for the six because, just for that reason.
Okay.
Actually, I've had 75 letters of inquiry because there's so little housing anywhere. And only one person was a single mom. And we have not had any couples asking, inquiring.
Are we within our legal rights to put such a restriction on that property?
Yeah. Yeah.
If you said, if you were looking at three units and you could have two people... Well, actually, you could probably have four.
Yeah, you could have, yes, you could have up to 12 people.
You could have 12 people in three units, yeah.
Yeah. So Tim, do you have any comment on that? Because I'm not sure how he would do that.
Well, because water is an issue. I think that if it was six, we would be willing to sign on to that restriction.
It can be a condition of the variance because you're not required to grant a variance. It could, as long as the... And if the applicant is agreeable to it, it's essentially a restriction on the property or a covenant on the property. Very difficult to enforce, of course, but you can make... I think you can make that a condition.
What if there was a violation? What would be the recourse? Could you... I mean, would they lose their occupancy certificate?
The way it's organized is that there is a transition from rental to ownership. So the Board of Canary Housing, which is really the owner, has input. And we know who will be moving in and who will be staying.
I got a question. How deep is that well that you're going to use?
It's... I forgot what she told us. I think it's about 80 feet. And we're also planning to have a 1,000-gallon storage tank inside.
Reservoir.
Reservoir inside. So that we're drawing off the reservoir and...
We have a report from Shoot Water Systems. And they tested the well. And they got a water flow at three gallons per minute for two hours. That was their test.
Does that meet the requirement? That barely meets it for a single-family home, doesn't it? I think it's one and a half gallon or something.
Yeah, some banks, they require, something at that minimal, require a hole-in-tank.
That's not a town requirement that I know of. It would be a finance requirement.
Yeah.
Does anybody know what the average household draws on water?
Yeah, the... Without watering your lawn or filling a pool, it's 65 gallons a day per person.
I think one of my concerns about the project is that it's into the future. What if it's not a residence for environmentally sensitive people? I mean, more and just becomes straight apartments.
Well, it still has a restriction on it.
Well, that's why I asked that question. If it would still have the restriction, it would go with the property, so.
I think the thing about the restriction that concerns me is that we could make a decision here to restrict occupants, but we're restricting it with the current owners who are not going to be the current owners down the road. And the Canary Co-op is what I'm a little concerned by.
There's a regulatory agreement between... It's a bi-level incorporation with a regulatory agreement between them. So the Canary Housing umbrella organization always has supervisory responsibilities.
Well, I think he's suggesting that if Canary Housing sold the property to somebody else. Is that what you're concerned?
Our agreement is with Canary Housing at this point, not with somebody else.
No, it's actually with the property itself.
It could be on the property as a condition of the variance.
Yeah.
Stay with the property.
It would be a covenant on the deed. It would be a covenant, which would be recorded. But to answer Pat's question earlier about what happens if we don't... What if they don't live by the covenant? What do you do? You bring them to court and you take them to court and sue them over the covenant.
Is if they're not living by the covenant, is that they come to Canary Housing and there's an issue there? Because, you know...
Yeah, I think, like Donald said, if it goes to someone else's ownership without all the regulation and oversight, we, as a town, have to deal with that property. And we want to make sure that we're protecting the neighbors' rights to live their life without being encumbered by heavy usage of that property.
Yeah, I'm not real clear on who Canary Housing is. You're talking about a house that's very unique to New York State or even, you said, on the East Coast. Who exactly is Canary Housing?
A small nonprofit of people disabled with this problem.
And are there other examples of that anywhere that is visible?
There is a place that was built in California and a place that was built with four units, separate units, in Arizona. And that's pretty much it.
If I could ask, what was special about this house that you guys saw this potential in?
There's a lot of air circulation and it's up high, so it's pretty clean air. It's a nice area. You can walk. You can get out. A lot of people are restricted, like David's wife. So this is a place where you can get out into clean air and, you know, walk and enjoy the, you know, the town, the space, the parks nearby. It didn't have any heating system and it didn't have a lot of new materials built into it. So with the heating system, we didn't have to pay for taking out the old one and then putting in a new one. Just pay for putting in a new one.
And again, each family that lives there is a... There's at least one person that's chemically sensitive?
Yes.
Per unit?
Yes, we tried to be flexible so that you have to live by the restrictions that chemically sensitive people live by.
And how is that... So if somebody wanted to rent a part, if there was an open apartment there and you wanted income, what prevents a non-chemically sensitive person from renting?
We have a waiting list like you wouldn't believe.
Okay.
You can not have to go out into the public.
And these people would, they would move here from any place in the US?
Yeah.
Just have a place...
I mean, you have to say to the person, okay, here it is. Are you going to move or not before you know that? But basically, yes.
Just to have a place, a safe, healthy place for them to reside?
And to be with a couple of other people so you have a little support. You can, you know, maybe share a car or share trips to the grocery store or the farmer's market. You get, you know, somebody to talk to and do a garden with. And, you know, if you're in trouble, call 911. These are not things that people have when they live by themselves out in the country.
I got a question for the... I don't know who would ask, maybe Bob. The fire department next door, do they still blow a siren for calls?
I honestly can't answer that. I don't know.
Yes, they do.
Is that something that would be sensitive to people moving in there?
The cell?
The siren? The sound of the siren blast?
We've been there quite a bit. And if it's happened, it hasn't been a big problem. The other thing that we did is we looked at the cell patterns and the electricity in the area. And that was also pretty good. So we're not, we're being preventive, but not totally restrictive with the electricity.
They'd have to be aware of a field day that's there each year also.
We've been through two of those already. And we found that that was not much of a problem. I thought there'd be a lot of auto fumes and a lot of fumes from different kinds of things. And it just didn't seem to be much of a problem. Besides that, if you know that something is coming up, you can work around it. You can say, okay, I'm going to visit my mom for three days in June. That's different than something that just pops up and you have no ability to prepare and plan and get yourself out of the problem.
Because there are barbecues, I guess, that take place up in the Hamlet.
There's different vents that go on at the warehouse.
Yep.
The neighbor does that.
We've got...
Most of the time, the air quality is good and circulation is good. Nothing is perfect. This is better than anything else, any other site. We looked three and a half years before we decided on this site.
Yeah, I think... What I think we... A way to look at this, I mean, I think this is a great idea. I think that would be wonderful that Pompey could bring... That Pompey could, could uh, bring uh, great joy and great relief to some, to some people like it has for all of us that love and love Pompey. I think what we have to figure out is if we do nothing with this house, twelve people could live with there. And, and I think that this is, might be the best alternative for that piece of property, to restrict. As much as we are comfortable restricting it and, and let these people get some relief. Without burdening the neighbors and by that, I mean, restrict, figure out what we're comfortable with the capacity of that house or that property. And, and, and see if, if we can come together with that and then move forward and, and address these other issues. If we think that, you know, that the capacity of that house and that well and that septic system, that piece of property is four people. Uh, maybe we should move forward to that idea, or five people, or uh. Um, otherwise, if we do nothing with this property, it could be uh, have twelve people in it or more. Just the essence.
That's why I'm looking at, you know, it's a three apartment. Worst scenario would be six people. You have a, a married couple or, or, or a couple with, with child or children.
Seven, seven would be worst case probably.
Okay.
Um, three, three, if you, if we uh, agreed to the fourth, fourth apartment.
Right. They'd be doing laundry on that site as well? That's, that's more water, more water consumption?
Well, the sixty-five gallons a day includes laundry.
Yeah, so I think that's why I, I said, you know, let's come up with a number. That we, we could work around, say we're gonna restrict it to four people. And, and then, and work out from that. Um, I, I, you know, I. I hate to just say, you know, look at it as a, as a four-unit thing with unlimited number of people there. It, there's just no way it's gonna fly. It's just not gonna happen. So I think maybe the applicant can say, look, can we get away with five people? Can we get away with six people? Or can we?
I'm here with six.
So now, okay, so if, if that changes it to six people that resident, how do we feel about that? I'm, I think that still might be too much, but now we're pushing our, to me. Oh, are, are really what we could legally restrict that to.
I just, I just, I just think if you, if you try to restrict that, if you have a married couple, even if they're young and they have children. And you're gonna tell them that they're gonna go over the, the number that we've restricted them to, that they're going to be kicked out based on. Based on having a child. And I think that's gonna be awfully difficult to, to hold up in court. I, you're gonna, you're gonna try to remove a family for having a child. If that puts them over, over whatever number we come up with.
Yep, yep. Um, so now.
If you limited it to one person per unit and even, even, even as a precedent, if, if there's somebody in town that's got a three-unit apartment. And they're saying, well, I can make more money if I got a fourth unit. I can bring in another, you know, X hundred dollars a month. If I put another bedroom and, or, or meet the requirements set forth by, by this, why can't I do that?
Yeah, uh, uh, I mean, Dave always says precedence doesn't, uh, always has a lot of weight and, and we don't have to pay any attention to precedence. Although it, it is arguable in court, uh, I suppose, but um. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I would just like to make this work for these folks, uh. Uh, and, and, you know, obviously not, not at the, the capacity that that house could hold. It, it's just not doable. I mean, I, we know the house I'm sitting in right now has a holding tank in it, um, for water shortage.
I'm looking at something right now and it's, it's saying anywhere is between eighty-six and a hundred gallons of water per day per person.
Yeah.
And I, I found that on three different sites, so they are gonna need a substantial holding tank.
My.
A, a question for Tim. Are we really able legally to set a number of people per unit?
Again, it would be a co- it would be a covenant that goes on the deed. Whether you can actually enforce that covenant ultimately is going to be very, i- i- it would be a cold enforcement mechanism. It would be difficult and.
So if a neighbor complained, the neighbor would complain to the town, the town code enforcement officer would have to go make a decision.
Right, and e- e- even then. Ultimately, the, where do you go with a, a covenant? You go to court with a covenant and you try to enforce the covenant in court. But the point you raise is a very good point. If, you know, circumstances change.
And, and the fact is, she's saying it's hard for these people to find apartments or living places. And how are you gonna kick somebody out? Where are they gonna go?
Well, one of the things that we're hoping is that um, this opens up a funding path. And we've spoken to Senator May and uh. She said that she'll put this into state housing policy and funding um, going forward. So I'm hoping that other projects won't be so difficult and people won't be living outside in the, in somebody's backyard. Like they are now. Things will be, become easier after this project.
I'd be surprised if you had much luck asking the state for money right now.
Not asking for money, I'm asking for a pathway.
Is it a pathway money?
Um, HUD was developed because uh, the private sector doesn't have the ability to provide. Low and even in some areas, middle-income housing. And HUD was supposed to take care of all those special needs like disability and senior citizens and um, that kind of stuff. But somehow this disability is not covered. This disability does not get the um. The special neat, the special products and the special considerations that it, that it needs to be safe. It's easier to do other disabilities, um. You know, wheelchair accessible, um. Things on the uh, others on the, on the elevator.
For blind people.
Yeah, this is, this require, this, people need to be segregated and dedicated here. And that's, hasn't been, you know, what using public money for disability housing has been about.
Um, question for Bob. Did, when you talked to the neighbors next door, uh, Pat Admin was it? Um, did he mention how deep their wells were?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five, shelf.
She's on, she's online right now to talk, um.
Okay.
Finally get online.
All right, so, but they have two wells, correct?
One is a hand-dug well uh, on the back of their house, which is thirty-five feet deep. Um, and then they have a well out in the, behind the garage. I don't know how deep that is, but she explained that that, they hit sulfur water on that one. They only use that in case of emergency. Um, they also have a cistern in the basement to collect rainwater. They use that for their toilets and things, just so they can serve water.
Yep, I've lived that life. I know. Okay.
Well, water is a shortage up in that area.
Yeah.
I think for myself, I think um, the requirements that Pat talked about, number of people, I think that that could be dealt with. That, that's a compromise, seems like that could be resolved. Um, the septic seems like that has to get a county approval. It's gotta be right. There's no wondering about it. But the water is. You know, the, the water is such that it's a, it's a commodity that people are running out of and, and we'll be testing that further. And I don't understand wells, but if this, if this new property well is a hundred something feet and everybody else is thirty-five. Are we just draining all those other wells? I don't understand wells enough to know the answer to that, but to me, the, the big concern on this project is, is the usage of water and what it does to neighbors. And it's a tough one because nobody really knows the answer as to why a well goes dry or why it doesn't go dry.
But wells are always difficult, especially in Pompey. Um, the, we, we, we don't have a nice sand la- layer of uh, aquifer. It's, it travels through the fractures in the limestone beds, which are vertical, sometimes horizontal. And so you don't know. You, you might tap directly into a neighbor's well and be three hundred feet from it and not know it. So it's uh, and especially on that top of that hill, the, it's, it's known for not having adequate water.
Well, one more water question would, for me would be, if we allow this project and let's say, God forbid, the neighbor's well goes dry. Can the neighbor sue with the ca- the town for allowing this? We have a legal obligation to protect people's water.
Well, I, I think it's part of the, it's part of your analysis tonight. Uh, one of your responsibilities is to determine whether or not the benefit to the applicant outweighs the potential detriment to the community. And you have to determine whether or not, I mean, th- this is a real issue. The well issue is a ve- is a real issue. Um, and, and the town gets due for anything, just like, like anybody else. Um, it, it, the variance would be for, you know, for an extra unit. Uh, in a place where um, there's some question about the adequacy of the wells in that area. So I think it's a very important um, matter of discussion here. And it can be taken seriously before any variance is granted for this kind, for this type of. Um, for, for an additional unit in an apartment complex.
So again, they can, they, they can continue with their three units and complete the building and uh, just with a building permit. Um. So we're, we're looking to, our, the request to us is to add a fourth unit.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what I think is, we're gonna be better off granting this variance. Then we can tie a covenant to it. Otherwise, we cannot. And it is gonna.
Right, yes.
We're gonna cut the occupancy by one third or by two thirds. Uh, which is protecting the neighbors uh, more than if we uh, do nothing or deny this. We're actually acting in, and that's, that's what I'm trying to do by the, restricting the number of occupancy, occupants.
How many residents have there been? Or how many, how many um, people have been living at the residence for the last couple of years?
Zero.
Nobody's been in there.
It's been vacant for enough, for mu- much more than three years.
Nobody's using the water. Uh, back, Pat, as far as a, as far as a storage tank, if you've got a thousand gallons. And you're divvying that up amongst three, or if we gave them the variance and they, they did a fourth. I mean, they're just, everybody's drawing from the same. And so they're really not using any less water. They just have more water available when they need it.
Yes, uh, you know, cause if, if a well is producing three gallons a minute. Uh, you, you're not using three gallons every minute of the day, so, so you, you store that, store it.
They store it. So as far as the neighbors, once they fill that tank and they got their thousand gallons. Whatever happens to that aquifer or whatever happens to the other well water in the community. As that tank fills up to a thousand gallons over however much time it takes, once that's got a thousand gallons in it. They shouldn't, I mean, how's the, how's that work? How is the pull?
The tank is gonna keep replenishing itself throughout the day and night.
Yeah, and, and just for a better number, uh.
Will it continue to keep pushing a thousand is what I'm asking.
If you wouldn't do a thousand gallons.
Then, then you're really just, the storage tank is just a convenience.
Uh, yeah, more or less. I mean, it, yeah, it's not changing the dynamics of it.
It's changing the water that you're pulling away from the, the community now.
That is correct, but, but just so, for a better number, you would more likely be a, a three or four hundred gallon storage tank. Uh, not a thousand gallons, cause if a family's using a hundred gallons a day, uh, you wouldn't go beyond, there would no need to be storing more of the water than that.
They're calling, yeah, they're saying sixty-five gallons a day per person.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's six people or however, whatever you wanna limit it to.
Yeah, but, you know, it's not like you gotta pull a thousand gallons out of the ground every day.
Right, no.
Another water question for me, if I could. If that was a single-family house, which is what it was, I believe. And let's say you had a family of five living there. And now we're looking at putting four units in that may have five people. Do five units with five people use any more water than a single-family house with five people in it? I would assume that's the same.
When we bought this house, it seemed to have seven bedrooms.
Five units with five people use.
I, I, there would probably be some efficiencies with la- laundry and stuff if it was a single family. Uh, I would guess you're washing the, you know, you're, if you got a dishwasher, you're, you're filling it up with uh, you know, more dishes.
One family fills it up quicker than five and maybe five running it is efficiently. So the four units may end up using a little bit more water.
Hey, here's a comment you need to.
Yes, we are not putting dishwashers or allowing them in this site.
Well, that was just for discussion.
Yeah, but that's all your water use is not happening.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Dave.
Anything else to add here?
Dave?
Yes.
Um, Ben Albin cannot, she cannot get online? She cannot get, uh, we can't hear her to ask, so she can ask her question?
Okay.
It's, uh, she wants to know, how did this property get zoned for a three-family in the first place?
Um, it's a part of the town's adopted uh. Um, zoning. Uh, it's uh. Been zoned as that uh, Hamlet residential. I think that's been in place for about twenty years now, at least, the Hamlet zones, so. Um. Now, that was up to the, the board at the time it was, the zoning was adopted. And I don't know if that answered the question, but that's uh, some of the history.
There's two more questions um, on Zoom. Uh, one, I think you guys have already addressed. It's a comment about. How can housing um, sensitive people across from a firehouse that also conducts annual field days with noise and fireworks be healthy? For these people, wouldn't a more rural setting be better for them? Signed, a concerned local resident?
Prevailing wind is, you know, from the northwest and it seems pretty consistent. And it's been really pretty good.
And from Jim Green, um, does the chemically, do the chemically and electrical. Sensitive populations use more or less water than other populations? In other words, will the water usage be more or less than a house, than like a house of four individuals?
Well, we're cutting, we're restricting the electricity use by not having dishwashers. Um, we do have uh, small washing machines in each unit. Um. Otherwise, there's cooking and bathing. That's probably the same whether you're chemically sensitive or not.
Yeah, I, I still keep coming back to the alternative for that piece of property.
You have to ask these though, cause that's all right.
Uh, one, one thing I haven't, I've been trying to figure out how to say this, but, but. We talk about other uses in the area that are there, especially the firehouse. Um, and the uh, their. Barbecue, carnival, uh, whatever they call it every year. Should there be some kind of uh. I- in the agreement of recognition that that, that it will be happening and it could be happening into the future, that, to make sure that the. The, the owners and the occupants are aware of that, so they don't, they don't come back.
Responsibility of Canary Housing. Uh, and there's a, there's a transition period, a trial period. So that somebody can see, is this good? And there's a transition period, a trial period, so that somebody can see, is this good for me or not? And, you know, the last two field days, I was there pretty much every day. I saw the, you know, the trucks come in and set up and, you know, people come to the field days and I saw them go down and drive away.
Okay.
The issues that we have had with chemicals have been kind of short-lived. There's apparently somebody who brings trash and once in a while, there's a little bit of that. And sometimes when they bring fuel oil to the church across the street, I can smell that. And I think there was barbecue smell for half an hour, not from field days, but, you know, in the last couple, around, around the holiday. But it was half an hour and then it was gone. And that's a lot better than other rental units in the city. And when you can prepare and you know something's coming, or you close your windows, because they're putting new windows in, then you have a place to go that's safe inside the house.
Are you looking for the community to notify you in advance then, before they do something?
It might be nice, you know, for paving the road. But aside from that, I don't see that there's anything we need notice for.
This is a farm community. Open burning is allowed. There's no restrictions on that except for two months out of the year. The fire department has other things that are ongoing there during the summer. There's, they have a big sale going on. There's a lot of activities in that area. Ultimately, what's going to end up happening is you're going to be coming to me, calling me up, saying this is going on, you need to do something about it. This is a farming community. I know across the street from me, when they spread the manure, that that stays in the air for quite a while. And when the wind blows in the right direction, it's going to head up.
It's there, yes. I smelled it. Doesn't seem like a big deal to me.
Okay. I mean, it's,
Spend the day in my shoes. We've all been there.
I've owned this house for a couple of years now. And I'm there very often doing small things because I'm slow and, you know, I don't see big problems in the neighborhood.
I'm not trying to discourage you. I'm just because ultimately what's going to happen is it's going to come back on me.
So in the last three years, have we come to you or to anybody in the town and said, there's a problem? We've owned it for three years.
Let's try to keep focused on the variance issue because there are going to be people who are going to be living there who are chemically sensitive, whether the variance is granted or not granted. The question before the zoning board tonight is whether or not one additional unit in a three unit, three unit building would be allowed on this site.
And we also have to actually vote on that frontage issue too.
That's assuming that the variance is granted.
Yes.
Right, Bob?
Well,
I'm sorry.
Right now, the 150 feet is only going to be required if there's four units?
Correct.
Otherwise, it'll be just 100 feet, which they already have.
Yeah.
So that variance is dependent on the others, on the other.
Okay, so we vote on the issue of the difference between the existing 46,000 square feet and the required 60,000 square feet.
For four units. Could I clarify? Dave, could I clarify that, right now, if they were to stay with three units, they would not have to be asking for any variance from our board?
That's correct.
Okay, and as Pat has mentioned, if we do allow the four units, then we have some ability to restrict.
Yes.
Okay.
Which we can do by covenant.
As far as I can tell, the only detriment to the community is the water issue. Do you guys agree on that?
Yeah.
That's my issue right now is the water.
Well, detriment to the community, again, as Tim was saying, you know, it's the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the community. And right now, the detriment, the benefits to the applicant are plenty. There's lots of great things that can come from this. The detriment to the community, right now, the biggest thing for me is the water.
Yep, the concern neighbors have is the water.
Whether you have, whether you have three or four there, nobody's been living there, so the water draw hasn't been an issue. So when you put somebody in there and you're drawing 65 gallons per person per day, again, it's hypothetical as to whether or not we know it's going to affect the neighbors or not. We don't know, no crystal ball.
The only other issue is the septic system, but that is not up to us. That's a test or fail with the county health department.
The size, the square footage as well with the fourth unit. So nobody's complained about that. Nobody.
The physical size of the building.
We haven't gotten anything from the community. Nobody's called in an issue about, about how many square feet are necessary, so on and so forth.
No.
About parking or traffic. It's just, it seems to me that it's a water issue.
Yes.
There's a few more questions here. One is from Pat Albin on Facebook. Will this be approved for Section 8 housing?
Not as a unit, but if we keep the rent at the fair market rent level, then Section 8 people can apply, provided they're chemically sensitive.
Who makes that diagnosis?
Well, we pretty much know each other. And, you know, we know what we struggle with.
But is there a doctors, is there a written statement that says this house is specifically for chemically sensitive people? And that's not something I don't think we can hold them liable in a covenant, can we, Tim?
That's why we have the umbrella organization. That's what we need to do is to make it segregated and restricted to chemically sensitive people. That's the function of the umbrella organization.
If we do nothing, 12 chemically sensitive people could live in that house when that place is ready. If we do nothing.
In the three units that could be there.
Yep. That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
So, if we want to protect, if we, if water is everyone's concern on the Pompey Hill, which I know it is, we need to restrict the use of that house. It seems Gestapo-ish. But that would be in the best interest of the neighborhood to put a covenant on that piece of property.
I agree.
Okay.
We've gone to, that's quite socialist and I can't believe I'm proposing it, but,
Yeah.
But, you know, I know water is a very variable commodity, especially in my business. And nobody's going to live there if there's no water. So, you know, that's going to solve the problem for everyone.
Or if they can't get a septic system approval, but that's, that's another issue, it's not us.
Right.
If you approve that for six people, there is, there's just no way to enforce that. I just don't understand. I agree with you, Pat. I just, I hate to make another rule that can't be enforced. I mean, I feel sorry for Bob. I just, and the neighbors will have the same, they'll do the same thing.
Suppose the board makes that requirement and you make the agreement with the board and the board votes, yes, we will uphold that requirement.
And then you let the community police that?
Yeah.
The other alternative?
I mean, we're already policing a lot of stuff, the choice of what comes into the house. And, you know, mail stays on the porch and nobody brings certain kinds of, you know, essential oils in. And we don't do this and we don't do that and.
Can I ask a question in regards to the going from three to four units? I didn't see it on the blueprint, I'm not very good at plans. Can you give me an approximate square footage of each of the four units? It can't be very much, it's not that big a house.
When we bought it, the Realtor estimated 3,000 square feet. And I think that there's about 900 square feet.
Per unit.
In each unit.
And then there's a proposed addition.
Four times nine is 3,600, so.
The basement.
Well, we added the,
What do we mean by the basement?
We added the fire escape and we added an entrance and exit to the basement, which there wasn't any before.
So the basement wouldn't be included in the square footage of a property listing?
It is if it's finished.
Oh, it depends because the footprint is pretty much the same for three apartments or four.
If it's finished basement, it's included.
Yeah, that's right. But it's not at this point, is it?
Two units in the rear, which would be in the addition that are 28 by 36 approximately.
There's an addition going on the house?
There's a proposed addition.
A section of the house that was too rotted to use, but was there. So it's.
Okay, I didn't realize that, that changes the math quite a bit.
It doesn't change very much.
Yeah, that proposed addition is shown on the proposed site plan.
But the original photographs, if you look at them, they have, they have that two-room addition there on the back.
The site plan shows it.
And then you requested that we put a fire escape in, which we did, and we needed access to the basement.
Tim, how much of a legal nightmare would it be if the scenario arose that Kevin said a single mom is there, or a single woman is there and gives birth to a child? And then they, I mean, it's actually, it's really the organization's issue, but they have to issue an eviction notice.
As I've been saying, and I'll repeat it, enforcing that covenant would be very difficult.
You mean policing it? What about, why would enforcing it be difficult?
Well, because if the applicant or if the applicant decides they don't want to live by that covenant anymore, how are you going to enforce it? Other than by going to court and getting a court order to declare a declaratory judgment that that covenant was put in place specifically because of the water issue. You'd have to get a court to agree to that.
If you build in the flexibility of six people instead of four, then you pretty much get around that problem because we're expecting to interview people, one person per apartment. So if somebody gets married or somebody has a baby, then, you know, you're up to five, maybe six, but not more than that.
But, I mean, unfortunately, the town of Pompey is not afraid to go after people and try to run them out of town. I've witnessed it, you know, so we're not afraid to do that. You know, I think, you know, you like to believe that people are going to live by the rules. And if they're not, there's consequences. You know, whether we want to close the doors in the town of Pompey, which a lot of people do, I think we have to believe in people and.
It sounds like as long as Canary Housing is the owner, we may not have a problem. But we can't guarantee that ownership into the future.
But the covenant itself would run with the property and would, like, anybody who was going to be purchasing it would give them some pause, I assume.
Yes.
Purchase that property.
Yeah, that's true. Well, there's a, we still have an open hearing. We still had a few comments from the public, but is there a point at which we can close the hearing?
I'm just going to go back to David Bravo calling one more time. And the sole purpose for putting a fourth unit in is to make this more financially feasible? Or is it to allow one more chemically sensitive person a place to stay? Which one is it?
It was both.
Now, which one, which one, which one could live without the other?
The impetus was to, what, the bank suggested it in order to make the project financially feasible. Because, you know, three units, we basically have to spend almost as much money as we do for four. And the fourth unit allows us the income to pay for it. That's basically where, the footprint is the same.
And you've crunched all those numbers down to, you can do this with three and you're not here tonight. You want to do this with three, this meeting?
We started off with three and we were, we only went to four when we had the financial issues that we didn't expect or plan it.
Kevin, if the bank is recommending they consider it, what they're really saying is three doesn't cut it.
Yeah. They need a fourth unit, a fourth rental income to make it. And you're guaranteed to rent all four of those units?
Oh, yeah.
And if, and I know you said there's a list, I don't know anything about that list, nor do I know anything about the chemically sensitive or electronically sensitive community. If you have one of those units open, if somebody leaves there, passes away, something happens and there's a unit open and there's not somebody immediately moving here from Nebraska or Montana, that unit is not being paid for and you're right back to where you are today. It's actually worse because now you spent the money for the fourth unit. And you don't have anyone in that unit.
So you're suggesting that one month's vacancy is a serious problem?
I don't know if it would be one month. Again, I don't know the list of people or how long.
Bank requires a six-month cushion in your rental income.
Say, then again, I missed that?
Bank requires a six-month rental cushion in your budget.
Can I ask, I don't just probably.
Six months without rent.
If you had a problem finding a fourth person, are you allowed to rent it to a regular person? And I'm using a bad word, I'm sure.
Or a non-chemically sensitive person?
Thank you, Kevin.
No, but if somebody is married, for instance, and one, and only one of them was chemically sensitive and that person died, then we would like to be flexible and let the other person either stay or take a little time to find another place.
You're still opening a Pandora's box there.
You have to be willing to live by, you know, the restrictions that the chemically sensitive people have to live by. This doesn't transition into a more expensive apartment and it doesn't transition into a normal apartment.
But that becomes part of the covenant again.
Created and dedicated.
Hey, rules, I think.
If somebody isn't willing to live there in that way or, you know, then Canary isn't renting to them. And the rental, you know, will transition to you.
Well, folks. Well, folks, some some point we got to uh, we we can close the hearing and we can still ask the applicant questions since the the public can't comment. Or if you don't feel we got enough information, uh you know, we can adjourn to another night, but if I'm um I haven't heard anything new. I haven't heard anything missing. I I think we've covered all we're gonna cover.
One remaining question um about fire code occupancy from Andy Dober, a local resident resident. How is fire code occupancy calculated? Has this been done based on the required square footage per person allowance?
Now, can you answer that? I'm not sure.
I don't understand the question. I haven't got a full set of drawings here. I've got, I have a partial, I'm considering the partial set. Um, I can't answer that. What what has done though is he has added fire escapes in.
Right.
Uh, he has added egress in in the project.
So each each unit has.
Two means of that. And each bedroom has egress windows.
Yes.
Okay.
And.
Fire separation, one hour fire separation between each unit and between the units and the uh stairs that go up and down.
So as far as I know, that's all it's required for uh.
It meets both.
Yeah.
And one more um again from Andy Dober. Will four rooms generate more tax revenue for the town or not? What if this organization falls behind on their tax liability?
The assessment is gonna be based on the value of the house. There's different ways that the assessor assesses homes. Um, but because this is an apartment, they might look at the income component of it to assess the house, but ultimately, it's the assessor's decision. Either the market value or the income uh income generation. That's how the assessor will look at this.
Yeah, I don't I don't think that that's a direct concern of ours.
No.
We're.
Well, I move that we close the hearing.
Okay, so we have a motion made in second to uh close the hearing. And as I said, uh to anyone who's listening, you can keep on listening. Our deliberation is public and you can keep on listening, but we're just closing the the public portion of the hearing. Um, and uh so we have a motion made in seconded. Any further discussion?
I have one more question before we close.
Okay.
Is the tax status of this Canary organization tax exempt?
I believe it is. Five oh one C three.
Property taxes.
I didn't hear the property tax issue?
Yes, but it doesn't apply to property taxes.
Okay, bad answer.
The assumption fails tax, but not property taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, another discussion? So we have a motion made in seconded to close the public hearing.
Who made, who made the motion?
I did.
Pat.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Then seconded I.
Done.
Okay, thanks, Pat.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? If not, would the secretary please call the roll?
David Tessier?
Yes.
Patrick Frizzi?
Yes.
David Hale?
Yes.
Donald Nukebauer?
Yes.
Kevin Sharp?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carried. The hearing is closed at eight fifty P M. Um, okay, now we have to make a decision.
Okay, I would further move to uh approve this uh area variance with the restriction of five residents total, in total, in the property.
Okay, and we're talking about the increase uh depending on how you word it, the difference between sixty thousand square feet of land required and the forty-six thousand square feet of land uh existing.
I'm not saying five adults.
Five persons.
Five persons. Five residents here, five residents or five persons?
Ed, are you gonna put a contingency on that?
I'm listening.
Contingency, a covenant contingency?
Well, the covenant is the five people.
Yes, that's the covenant.
That is the restriction. Um, uh if anybody else wants to add or before, look for a second.
If if they had the three apartments, they could still have five people in it.
They can have twelve.
Sure. Well, what, I don't, I don't see the reason having another apartment.
Uh, they want four families, four individuals, not roommates.
We want four units.
For pay, for paying customers.
Yeah, I'm I'm not on board with it. I'm sorry. I set this up years ago for this reason.
Well, I'm just, that's what I want to do. I want to put a proposal out there. If we got to second it, then we know where we're standing. If not.
So does anybody want to second that motion?
Um, can I ask Dave Hale, your additional thoughts on why you're not comfortable?
Uh, water's an issue, neighborhood. I think it's gonna be more uh more of an issue later down the road.
Well, water, water was my main concern also and still is, but to Pat's point, if if we don't do what Pat's recommending, that house will have twelve people in it.
Could have, could have.
Worst scenario.
Right, may maybe not twelve, but it'll have six for sure and maybe more. And if and if we go the direction that Pat's recommending, then we can limit it or have a shot at limiting it.
And how do you identify who's living there? Is that, is that gonna be under the jurisdiction of Canary Housing or is that gonna be the town of Pompey?
Well, I think we're gonna rely on Canary House. And and like I say, this is a, this is an honesty agreement uh.
So if somebody's up here from Florida during the summer for six months and a community member notices that somebody's been in that house for X months and asks, do you live here? And they say no. And yet they've been there for six months. Does that constitute them living there?
Yes.
What what's the timeframe? Two months, three months, six months?
It it does open up quite a, quite a problem for enforcement.
And I, again, I'm just, I'm just, whatever the hypothetical scenario is that I can make up, I'm gonna throw it out there.
Yep.
Because somebody somewhere will do that.
One thing we haven't, we haven't talked about recently in a few minutes here is that we have two comments from, written comments from neighbors who say they're just not in favor of this uh application. Uh, I get mostly for the water issue.
Yep, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that they fully understand the consequent, the alternative. I mean,
Well.
uh which we've all discussed and, you know, as long as they understand the alternative, that's okay. We can say no.
Yeah.
Right.
Can I say something, David?
Yes.
Okay, um, the the zoning for the property is the zoning for the property. We shouldn't, we should, so if it allows three units today, then there was a thought process that went into passing that law.
Yes.
To try to change that by allowing another unit but restricting it is 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 problematic in my view. If if we're concerned about a fourth unit, then that's what the decision should be based on, the fourth unit, not how many individuals live in there. Um, we saying that if there were three units, twelve people could live there, that would mean that you have four people living in each unit, and I don't know that that's possible.
But if we, if we, we we have no control over the ownership of this into the future. It could become anybody. Uh, you know, Canary Housing's gonna open, own it for now, operate it, and that they're gonna try and turn it over to some of these people who are gonna own it. And and at some point, it could refer to a department house. And that was a four, you know, a department house instead of a three unit. Um, I I think, I think that that's the way I see it. Um, and long term, uh that Tim's right. Is it three units or four units? Uh, restricting the number of people per unit is a real difficulty for the town, for the code officer and uh I know I've heard both sides, but go ahead.
Tim said it a minute ago. It's gonna be very hard to enforce how many people are living there.
Yes.
Going through, I'm going through this right now on another piece of property and I cannot enforce it.
So, yeah, but as as I said, so.
They're gonna do what they're gonna want. They're gonna do what they want to do.
Some some previous town board set the zoning for this property at this uh handling residential with with these conditions. So is this board ready to change that?
Could I ask David Bravo calling a quick, another quick question about the chemically sensitive people that that would be living there? Do they come with family? What is typical? What is? And maybe there isn't a typical, but what in in your sense do you see happening there? Are there, are there families of four people coming in, one people, one person, two?
Well, typically, typically, somebody, a family of four people would uh most likely buy a house that's in a safe area and modify it for their needs like my wife and I did when we, and we had kids. We just, we've lived here for thirty-five years. We've done very little work on the inside because just about anything that I would do on the inside would bother my wife, so we don't do anything.
So there is a typical and it's a woman, single woman. And like I said, I've had seventy-five applications and only one woman had a child. And we haven't even had any couples. We we've had a couple of men apply, but the problem itself is three to one a woman's problem. So there are fewer men who get to this.
But does she come with a family?
No, not usually. Usually she's single because it's hard to live with. So, you know, if she was married, then probably the kids weren't with the husband.
Well, I guess I I this is a tough call, but I have to say that I obviously listen to everything and um I know what the zoning is for and what it's there and and I can't speak for the board who created the zoning at that time. But I I think I am not in favor of adding the fourth apartment to this house. There's my comment. So we have a motion that's been made but not been seconded. Do we have a second so we can vote on it or do we uh, does someone have another motion? Or do we need more information? Do we need to? You you wanna watch?
The questions that I'm asking, and again, I, the questions that I feel that I'm I'm not informed of what Canary Housing is and that the community doesn't understand that either. That if there's one person living there, there'll never be twelve. If there's three people living in three units or four people living in four units, what's the difference?
I I guess I'm, I see it differently. Again, I just, I'm I see long term, maybe because I'm older than most of you guys, but uh is it gonna be Canary Housing forever? And who's, what's the next owner gonna do here? It's just gonna be apartments, probably, possibly. We're opening up the possibility to have.
Is that setting, is that setting precedent?
Right.
Is that, that's not setting a precedent for someone else, but that's still predicting the future?
That's what zoning does. We we predict the future. We predict the town board to predict how they want the Hamlet Pompey to look into the future when they set up the zoning on uh on this and the other parcels. And and they they have a restriction on there of uh two to three families in one condition. When you go to multiple families, you can need a different condition.
Uh, David Bravo calling, if we don't, if we don't grant you this variance, what happens?
I don't understand the question.
If we don't grant you a fourth unit, if we don't grant you the variance to to build this fourth unit, what happens to the house?
Well, the size remains, the signs are the size remains the same for this project. And we'd have to discuss how we would deal with that with our board of directors.
Whether you would finish it as three-bedroom house or abandon it and move on or, you know?
Well, it's got more space.
Yes.
We we would have to discuss different possibilities.
I mean, is, does the possibility, you have purchased this house as Canary Housing. Does the possibility exist where you pull the plug on the Canary Housing and you bring in four people per unit and you got twelve people living there? Can that happen?
We would sell it. I mean, one possibility is that we say, okay, we can't, we don't have enough funding for this and we.
And we're back to Pat's, we're back to Pat's scenario.
And we're back to, you know, this.
They sell the house. It's got three units in it. They could put four people in each unit.
Yeah, but nobody's gonna live anywhere where there's no water. Uh, and forever's a long time and to say what what what's gonna happen forever, who knows? And so if if, in fact, we grant the four units and then it becomes just general public housing, we're not gonna fill it up with people. Uh, if there's no water there, it's not gonna, it's all, if it's gonna support four people, that's all the people are gonna live there.
You were already set to have three apartments there before the bank said something, correct?
Yes. And part of, you know, part of the fourth was.
If they, if they don't finish the fourth unit, they're gonna have about a thousand square foot basement unfinished. It's a twenty-eight by thirty, it's, I'm sorry, it's a twenty-eight by thirty-eight area that would be unfinished.
In the basement?
Or you didn't go with the four unit, the fourth unit.
I don't hear a second to the motion. So I hear a different motion.
Repeat the motion, please.
I move that we grant the emotion, I'm sorry, grant the variance of for the, I believe it's the area variance we're talking about.
Yeah.
So the area variance to reduce it to uh whatever's the eleven thousand square feet requirement to the eleven thousand square foot apartment with the restriction that only five people may reside in that building. Uh, one one question I, can we put a time limit on the I want you to turn it into a four-bedroom apartment, I guess, or four apartment building, it's but could we restrict it to ten years or or and then go for a renewal of of? No, no.
Now you're getting to a more difficult enforcement, I think.
Yeah, so we're gonna restrict, so the motion would restrict it to five persons uh living in the entire building uh of a chemical-dependent nature or uh. uh, of a chemical dependent nature or sensitive nature. And anybody's welcome to add any thing that makes them comfortable. Or.
That's, that's, that's two things that are difficult to enforce. The type of people that live there and the quantity. Just, uh, very hard.
Yep.
Ed, I'm kind of stuck on, I, I think you came up with a reasonable solution to a difficult question. And I, I look at that and I, and I think that if there's a waiting list and there's two of these houses in the whole country that when somebody gets in there, they're, they're nailed down, they're not leaving. If this is really as valuable as, um, David is talking about, they'll dig in and, and they'll do anything they can do to stay there. And whether they got married or had a kid or anything else, I can't imagine the legal battle it would take to get somebody out. Regardless, and then, and I still think the ownership is, is a, an additional layer of difficulty, even though Tim's saying it's not, it goes with the property. I still think that the agreement with Canary and it's now owned by somebody else is gonna make it that much more challenging to enforce. So the, I can get over the water because of the way you've worded the, uh, motion, but I'm still stuck on the amount of people and how that would ever change once they got in there.
Yeah, I'm okay with, uh, not a second. I'm, I'm really okay with that. Guys, don't feel obligated in any way. Uh, it just, it just gets the discussion going and.
A place to start.
Creates an end.
We're not. Does anybody know if there's any other multifamily units? There's other multifamily units in Pompey.
Yes, yes.
Three units, four units?
I own a three unit.
In, in.
And a two unit. Uh, my daughter actually just bought one that actually had like twenty in it. I don't know, it was crazy. There's nothing, it's abandoned now, but.
In Pompey?
Yeah, it was on Ridge Road. There was, I don't know, there wasn't twenty, there was eight or nine in a barn.
I think they had a water problem also.
They, they did. He had storage tanks all over the place. My daughter bought it just to, just so somebody else didn't buy it and tried to do the same thing.
Yeah. So what do we do?
Benefit to the applicant outweigh the detriment to the community. I'm going back to Tim.
Make a motion to deny it.
Bye. Not having a second on Pat's motion, we have a motion to deny the application uh, from Dave Hale.
I'm gonna second Dave's, I'm gonna second Dave's motion.
Kevin, second. Uh, so we have a motion made and seconded. We got a lot of discussion. Is there any further discussion?
Not that I can think of.
Are we ready for a vote?
Uh, just, uh, one thing before discussion, just, uh, remember the alternative for the, for the folks that are in town there. I, I think that there's some merit to my merit, to my motion as far as preserving the, the liberties and, and rights and stress-free living of the other residents in that town, more so than by denying it.
Okay, any other comments? Are, are we ready for a vote? So the motion is to deny the application as presented. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Would the, uh, secretary read the call, read the roll for a vote?
David Tessier?
I say yes to the motion.
Patrick Frizzi?
No.
David Hale?
I, yeah, yes to the motion.
Don Nukebauer?
I would say no.
And Kevin Sharp?
You have to say yes.
Three to two.
Three to two in favor of the motion to deny the application. So that concludes our work for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, that makes the second, um, request for, um, variance moved.
Yes, that's, I was gonna say something to that effect, but that's correct. So we do not have to, uh, continue on the, on the second part of the motion. So I thank you all for participating and in this, we ran a difficult situation. I'm used to being in, we're all used to being in a room together, but I think it worked out well. It was a good hearty discussion. And, uh, thank you to the applicants for being patient with our system as well. Uh, I think we just discussed it as thoroughly as we could. And, uh, I, I believe we came up with a, a fair conclusion. Anything else?
David, could I, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Based on where this is right now, does the applicant have the ability or opportunity to come back again to us or not?
Tim, I don't know how that works. If they have new information.
My, my recollection is the only way they can come back to the board for the same variance would be by a vote of four, uh, four out of five of the members. I don't know that for sure, but that's my recollection. I'll, I'll look at it tomorrow, Don.
I would like the applicant to know what those guidelines are so they have the opportunity to pursue if they choose to.
And I think it's usually based on having some new information that's significant.
They can't come back with the same application, but if there was some way to come with a different application that might convince us otherwise, if they have that right, I would just like them to know what that is.
And I guess they would have to apply and we'll talk to our attorney about it and then we can.
But I, I'm sure the funds are not available, but one, one, one of my thoughts was if they were to drill a well and hit a great well, I mean, it would, it would take a deep well and, and I'm, I know that that's not probably a viable alternative, but.
Seems like the deep wells in that area are soulful wells.
Yep, you never know.
That's right. Okay, anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, motion is adjourned and is made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, uh, I guess we call the roll for adjournment.
Okay, David Tessier?
Yes.
Patrick Frizzi?
Yes.
David Hale?
Yes.
Donald Nukebauer?
Of course.
Kevin Sharp?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again for participating.
Good day.
See you next time.
Good night.
Everybody. Good night.